Is that, that, or is, are attending via Zoom, or not Zoom. Okay, we'll talk about that this evening. Councillor Eaves is out of town this evening, so he won't be here. And I would, first of all, have the approval of the minutes from last meeting. Do we have any comments from the council? Shirley?
I sent one minor change to Brenda. She said she'd made the change. I, in my new business last time, I gave recognition to Sarah Davis for stepping in as an outstanding help in the recreation department.
Shirley, can you get to the microphone?
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Look at what?
That's fine, it's better now.
Okay.
Talking, talking to the mic.
Thanks. And so she's, she was gonna make that change.
Okay. Brenda, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Any comments from the public? Seeing none from the public in the council, I'd like to have a motion for approval.
I move to adopt the minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
George, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Next item is manager's report. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, I'd like to start my report with asking our state representative, Steve Moriarty, to come to the microphone and give you an update on where the legislature is on a variety of activities related to the town.
Thanks, Brenda.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, hello, good evening. Good to see you all. The first item for legislative update is to let you all know that on Wednesday of this week, the legislature is reconvening for the first time this month, and what will be the only day this month, we'll be, we'll be meeting at the Augusta Civic Center up in, up north of Augusta to take care of accumulated business. And we'll be coming back next, I think, on May 13. And from that point on, the frequency of actual in-person meetings of the whole legislature is gonna really have to pick up to take care of the huge volume of bills that has been building up and is awaiting action. So you'll, you'll read something about our meeting on, on Thursday in the paper, assuming we don't go too late and pass, pass press time. Although the legislature adjourned, to use the Latin phrase, "signa die," which means without day, in late March, and technically ended the session, the committees have been working full bore ever since then, at a really high level and top speed. And so when we come back on Wednesday, it'll technically be called a special session, which will carry through until June, which would have been the ordinary adjournment date anyway. And we'll focus on all, all the accumulated bills and so forth. So that's what's going on with the legislature as a group. I want, I'm here primarily to let you know about a series of bills that, there were four of them all told, that went to public hearing this past Friday morning before the Judiciary Committee, of which I'm a member. And they all had to do with remote meetings of public bodies, such as yourself. And the reason they were all grouped together is that the committee tries to, to do that when bills have a common theme or a common subject, in order to take them up, you know, one on one day and one three days later, and lose track of the, you know, the train of thought and so forth. So we spent most of Friday morning dealing with these four pieces of legislation. Each one is different in some respect. But just by way of background, the MMA is the primary proponent of what appears to be the lead bill. And the MMA has had a very, very strong response from its members, member communities in terms of the success of remote meetings or meetings by Zoom from public bodies all over the state. The participation rate is way above normal. Those who are participating are very pleased at the opportunity to be able to do, do so without leaving home, without having to drive and wait and so forth, and take that kind of time out of their, their evenings. So in response to that, they asked a senator from Arista County to draft or to sponsor legislation on their behalf to basically continue the governor's executive order of a year ago March, which allowed public bodies, such as councils and select boards, to meet remotely and continue on their business, as you have done, and as has happened all over the state, notwithstanding the pandemic. So the, the, the draft bill basically would provide that towns and cities can adopt a policy which will allow for remote participation, both by the members of the body and by members of the public. Now hypothetically, as things stand right now, and there's a lot of work to be done to kind of combine these four bills together, first of all, understand it's not a mandate, it's an option. In fact, we had testimony on Friday from a number of people who were saying, this is not gonna work in our town, we're not interested. And the Maine, the MMA has heard the same thing. Couple reasons for that. If you're in a smaller, perhaps more rural community, there's a bit of tradition and heritage involved, and there's also a problem with broadband coverage. And they just can't get, folks can't access their local select board meetings. So it's really not gonna be one size fits all or something that works for everybody. But here in Southern Maine, where we have better coverage and connectivity, it, it has worked out very well. The mayor of Portland testified in support of each of the bills and said, we've had hundreds, if not into the, you know, the triple digit number of meetings since the shutdown of last spring, all very, very successfully and very productively. There's a lot of momentum out there. So if you adopt a policy that allows yourselves to meet remotely instead of in person, the draft bill would require that, at the same time, you provide an opportunity for public participation in your meetings remotely. Of course, people can still come here in person, as they do now, and many of you will probably choose to come in person anyway. But if someone's feeling ill, or, or, in Mike's case, is away and on, on business out of state, he could still take part in the meeting remotely. Once you take that step, though, you've got to make the same opportunity available to the public. And not, not only does the public have to have the opportunity to kind of listen in and observe, but they have to have the ability to participate. Now, that's a technological question that's way above my pay grade, but it can be done and has been done, and it's something I'm sure you'll continue to, to work on. All votes would have to be taken on a roll call basis, so those people watching at home can understand who is voting on which side of whatever issue you're, you're dealing with. Now, some of the other bills we heard on Friday, each one has a little bit of a slightly different approach. Now, for example, one of them says, and I agree with this provision, that events such as traditional town meetings and RSU budget meetings cannot be done remotely. And you can understand how difficult it would be to have a real town meeting and have a couple hundred people or more on Zoom all at the same time, and really get anything done. So I, I, I understand that, that position, I, I, I support it. Another one of the bills has a provision that would prohibit executive sessions remotely. I personally don't agree with that. I think the concern was that if you, as council members, have an executive session, lawfully, you know, as within the right to know law, each of you would appear on the screen, and nobody would know who might be sitting in the room with you, or sitting within earshot just outside the door. And so there was that concern, I think that's what, that concern lies behind the suggestion that no remote meetings by executive session. But the reality is, although, you know, we all take oaths to uphold, uphold the constitution and the laws of the state, and we all know how serious an executive session is, we also know equally well how important they can be, and how necessary they can be to get certain critical things done. And there's nothing, as a practical matter, that prevents somebody from talking to somebody the next day and sharing what they heard the night before. Now, if they're abiding by their oath, they won't do that, but it still can happen. So the possibility of somebody allowing someone to sit in the room but out of camera range at the same time, I think is remote and unlikely, and I don't think it's a strong enough reason to prohibit an executive session remotely by a governing body. This same sponsor of this bill would require that if you propose a policy for remote meetings, it would have to be confirmed by the voters of the city or town before the policy goes into effect. I'm not sure that's necessary. I mean, you adopt a lot of policies and rules as part of your normal business activity, and we're accustomed to that. So I don't know that this would need to go to a public referendum, but, you know, if, if things work out that way, then that would just be the way things would be done. And should this bill, with this provision pass, presumably in November, you'd be putting it to the voters as to whether they want to allow you to adopt this policy and permit remote participation. So again, all these four bills are likely to be combined. We've had, again, unified, well, well, not unified, but sequential public hearings on Friday. The next step is to go to what's called a work session, which usually follows a public hearing by one or two weeks. And it's at the work session when the committee members start talking among each other and, you know, weighing the pros and cons and articulating their positions. At, at the end of each work session, the committee takes a vote on whether to recommend passage of a bill, whether to recommend opposition to passage, or even to propose amendments right there on the spot to enable passage or to, to bring more people on board. And then that recommendation goes to the full legislature, and only the full legislature can actually vote to pass or reject a bill. The committee vote is meaningful in that it gives the legislature a sense of where the committee's coming from, but it's not binding, and it's not an adoption of the, of the proposed statute by, by any means. So the work schedule, the work sessions have not been scheduled on this. Again, I guess I'm repeating myself, my, my take is that the best portions of each one of these four bills will likely be combined into a single bill for consideration, rather than, you know, tackle the same thing four different ways and four different fashions. So that's probably what's going to be happening. So that's the, I think, the biggest news that is of direct impact and, and consequence to you as elected office holders and as the governing body here in town. And I assume that your policy, if adopted, would apply not, not only to your own meetings, but very likely to the planning board, and perhaps to other committees as well. But that would be for you to determine in your own discretion. So I hope that makes some sense. It's, again, we just started this thing, we're not halfway through it, and we're not at the end of the road yet, and I can't predict what the end of the road is gonna look like. But just so that you know, we're, we're working on this, on this topic.
Steve, we had a email from one of our citizens that was just on this subject. So it, I hope that this, this answered the question. So we'll see how that happens. Anybody from the...
Bob?
More of a mechanical question, Steve.
Sure.
Our mechanics. So if a legislature adjourns, presumably you, you get paid for your session. So if you go back into special session, does that mean you get special pay? Or you get paid as a one lump sum for whether you work one day throughout of the year or 365 days out of the year? I'm a little, when you say that, you, every, these committees are working and, and the, the legislature has adjourned, and then they're gonna go back into session, so I'm just a little curious as how that functions.
That's a good question, Bob. I've never, I've never been in a special session before. I think you're paid on a daily basis once you start up in special session. You're not paid year round. Once you, once you adjourn here in the first session, typically in June, you're not paid for the rest of the year. Even though your committee may still be doing some work on a long-term project, you're not paid for that. And the pay doesn't resume until you come back in January of, of next year and pick up with the so-called second session of the current legislature, which is only four months long instead of six. So I think we do get the full six-month allotted stipend for the, the, the normal length of the first session, six months. But I'm not 100% sure of that. And I won't, I'll be asking around, as a lot of people will, when the special session starts on Wednesday.
And was there a savings to the taxpayer last year when you didn't meet at all?
Well, we met for two months.
You did.
And adjourned in on St. Patrick's Day last year. So I think, well, the taxpayer's definitely saved, because even though I think we continue to get the bi-weekly allotment of the stipend, there was nobody driving to Augusta, so mile, no mileage payment, no per diems, no room lodging, meal allowance, so there was a big savings there. And it's, by the same token, because every, well, almost every, I won't say everyone, but almost everybody on the committees are working remotely from their homes. So they're not driving, they're not getting paid for meals and lodging, so there has been a big savings. On the other hand, renting the civic center for the whole legislature to meet it does not come cheap, and so that's an extra expense that the state has had to pick up.
That's owned by the city of Augusta?
It is, it's owned by the city. Yep, yep. And they can't leave it set up permanently for us, because they've got other events booked in there. So they, you know, they set up all the tables and all the electronics and, and mics and voting machines and so forth, or how, you know, you push a button to record your vote, and they've gotta take it down again. So we were there for two days in March toward the end of the month, be there one day in April, and at least one, but absolutely certainly more, more than one day in, in May, and certainly, and more than that into June.
Have all the legislators been vaccinated?
All the talk is, yeah. I mean, from much as what I see on Facebook and other communication things, everybody's, you know, crowing about getting their second vaccination and so forth.
You, you could go back into the House and...
Well, we could, but we couldn't maintain the distancing requirements. Because you've, you've seen the House, it's, you're, you're packed in there. It wasn't designed for the current standards. And there were some individual legislators who choose to go to Augusta and either sit in the committee room, or even sit in the House chamber, and take part in their meetings, but they do so by computer, not in person. So it could be just as easy sitting at home, but they've chosen, as a matter of principle, to go to Augusta and do that work. And they get their mileage paid, and they get their per diems and so forth, but most don't do that, including me. I'm sitting above my garage eight, eight, nine hours a day zooming, it just, it's incredibly exhausting.
I'm done. Shirley?
I just have a, just a point of note, for the public, actually. As an educator, I became very mindful of the number of times we use acronyms. And you said your, your bill is sponsored by the MMA, and I was just wanting to inform the public that the MMA is the Maine Municipal Association and not Maine Maritime Academy. So just point of clarification.
My bad, Shirley, I, I should've.
No, no, it's fine, it's just, I'm overly sensitive, because I, we would sit in meetings with parents, and they would give us this glazed over look, like, what are you talking about? So I've, oh, since that happened for me, I've tried to clarify all the acronyms.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you made, pointed that out. I'll tell you, there's about, I don't know, a couple hundred, 300 different organizations that come before us with bills and testimony, and every darn thing they submit has an acronym for who they are, just, I've never seen anything like it. I have no idea what they mean, but eventually they, you hear it enough that it sinks in.
Well, the field of education is just as bad with all those acronyms.
In DC, an acronym, an acronym has been raised to the level of another language.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, some of these things, you can get multiple acronyms in the same sentence, multiple different ones. And it's like Greek, it just, unless you go back and figure out where, where it came from earlier in the letter or the written testimony.
I try to talk to my daughter and point out what Shirley just did, and inadvertently, she can't help it, she just goes right back into the...
Sure. Yep, it happens.
Any other questions, Steve?
No questions, that's the latest in terms of what we've been doing.
Yes.
And I'll be back.
Thank you so much.
Hopefully get into May and tell you about the session on Wednesday, and particularly the status of these bills on remote meetings.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Brenda?
We just, do, do have a few more items under manager's report.
Okay.
Fortunately, there are a few. The planning board meeting last week went very well, some very exciting news about a new commercial building out on Route 100. It will be a professional office building that will, I believe at this point, have a dental practice in it, as well as a, kind of a health spa type of portion. It's an absolutely gorgeous building. If you haven't seen the planning board meeting, it's worth going on to YouTube and under Town of Cumberland Planning Board. You can zip right through the arch, to the architect, it's pretty impressive.
Greek Revival?
What's that?
Greek Revival?
It is, Bob, it is, you're gonna love it.
You said gorgeous.
It's, it's actually very impressive, and I think it will be a huge addition to Route 100, and hopefully will help us in attracting other businesses there. So stay tuned as that comes forward through the process. Our next meeting on May 10th, the, the Circuit Breaker or Senior Tax Relief Committee will be asked to meet prior to the council meeting and review some ordinance changes that we'll be sending out shortly. That has to do with changing toward our, our, our senior tax program, and those wouldn't take effect until the budget is passed, so we see that probably happening again in July or August of this year. The planning board also approved the language the council sent to them for the demolition permits, that was approved, really not a lot of discussion. The sweeper, which you approved at your last meeting, has been very busy. It's, the center is now complete on its first round and is heading toward the foreside. We still have some sweeping in West Cumberland to finish up on, but we're in hopes that the second round will pick all that up. I just spoke with Steve Gugans today, and he reported we had only spread about 700 yards of sand this winter. We use a sand-salt combination, it's 50/50, or heavier to the sand side sometimes. And that's about 30% less than we normally put out, so fortunately, there's not as much sand to pick up this year, which is, which is a good thing. I did, as I expressed to you, complete two $1 million grant requests in this new COVID funding that's supposed to be out to our, our, our representative, our US representatives. I applied to Shelley Pingree's office for those. The senators have still not sent out their details for application for those COVID monies. One was to complete the public works facility, which we didn't have enough money to complete. That was for the locker room, training room, and office building combination. And the other was for a new food pantry building, which included about $200,000 for site improvements, which was the extra parking lot we weren't able to fund because of the way the prices came in this year. So not very hopeful, but hey, who knows? Anything can happen, we'll, we'll see what does happen. We also received a letter today on a submission back in 2019 for a speed reduction request for Orchard Road, and that was denied by the DOT, they left the speed limits the same. Fortunately, they didn't increase them like they've done once before, when we've asked to lower them. We are seeing an increasing number of speeding concerns around town. The police chief has addressed several of the folks that have written in directly, and we are in the process of setting up more details around town and setting up our speed trailer to kind of monitor those. What that speed trailer does, actually, it just gives us the data of when the heaviest volume of traffic is coming through and when the best time for speed details might be. So we are, we are, we monitor that very closely. The other, the other thing, and I'm, I'm sad that Councillor Reeves couldn't be here tonight, but he sent out a email to the chairman and myself this afternoon and expressed serious concern about LD 214, which is coming before the state legislature this Thursday. It has to do with qualified immunity and eliminating qualified immunity for police departments. We're just under, I think, 200 police departments in the state, and qualified immunity is a complex issue, but I will tell you, without it, it will be difficult to recruit police officers, and it will be a different landscape for many of the communities in our state. Now, this is happening all over the country, so this isn't going away just because one bill gets thrown out, but there are several bills in front of the legislature now, and Mike is asking that, because his background obviously is in law enforcement, his whole career has been in law enforcement or serving the law enforcement community, and he is drafting a letter and requesting you consider signing off on that as individual counselors. Since we're not going to have another council meeting before Thursday, it would be difficult to submit this on behalf of the Cumberland Town Council, but I think with the timing, that's really the best we could do, is if you individually wanted to sign off on it, then he will provide you the opportunity to do so. So he'll be submitting something this Thursday for the committee to hear. Usually you submit those, and I think it's, I don't know, 21 copies that have to go into the legislature. But we'll find out, and I'll get back to you as soon as I have something. But he is flying back tomorrow, he said he's gonna be writing it on the plane and sending it to you, and I think I recommended, Shirley, he send it to you for, for grammatical review first, and, and I'm sure it'll be very passionate and it'll be direct to the point. The Maine Chiefs Association is also crafting a letter in opposition of LD 214, and the Maine Municipal Association has come out of the LPC, the Legislative Policy Committee, with a neither for nor against vote. So it's, it's, it's going to be the discussion that's gonna be going on all over the state and all over the country very soon, so it hits right home here on Thursday. So that's all I have under manager's report, Mr., Mr. Chair, and I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions, Bill? Seeing none? Thank you, Bill. Steve, you wanna say anything? Are you all set? Okay. Brenda, public discussion?
Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussion.
Thank you, Brenda.
Good evening, I'm Mike Doyle from Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I'm up here to give you kind of a roundup of items that have been pending because of my schedule and the council's schedule. There was a question about who put Porter's sign in front of his house, Porter should be fired, sign it was me, I take a great deal of pride in doing that. And I don't know how many of you people are paying for a $741,000 house, but you're paying for one down in Scarborough that Jeff Porter lives in, that's the current market value of it. And I thought it was kind of interesting that the guy's making, I don't know, $200,000 yearly, lives in a $741,000 house, and he's up here causing problems with parents, with kids in school, but he doesn't have any kids in school up here, he doesn't pay taxes up here, but he's causing trouble up here. Now, the next question that came up was, why is the town so totally divided currently on one side or the other? You know, people for the MSAD, 51 people against it, people for Porter, people against Porter. Well, I can tell you something, you folks have been blissfully ignorant of what's been going on in the school system. I told you about this two months ago, you should go over there and watch a meeting, but you refused to do it, and you have no idea what's going on. They're paying $12,350 to a company that says to stop white supremacy, we have to end capitalism. Are any of you in favor of ending capitalism? Because that's what the, the program is over there at the CCI. And she retweeted something from one of her followers, and this is a CEO of a national company, I know several CEOs... This is a CEO of a national company. I know several CEOs. I worked for some fairly decent-sized companies before I retired. And she retweeted this. This woman said that she needs some deep dickin'. And she put this out on her Twitter account for a national company and a CEO. What kind of due diligence are you people doing? You turn $40 million loose with these people and they're a bunch of morons. They don't do any work at all. They don't do any research at all. This was all on her website. If you've gone to her website, you could have seen all of this. Now, I deal with Assistant Attorney General Brenda Kelty on a regular basis because I do a lot of Freedom of Access requests all over the state. And she's the Assistant Attorney General that helps people like myself and other people looking for information to make the towns obey the law. Now, I've had many, many emails between myself and her over the years. And by the way, when the state legislature has a revision in the Freedom of Access law, I've been invited to testify, I think, three times. I'm one of the three civilians who have been invited to testify because I use it a lot. And when I say civilians, non-government employees, non-lawyers. And she had to scold Porter for the way he treated Sean in an email, that he was so disrespectful and so rude to Sean. She scolded him. Now, if you folks had your finger on the pulse of what's going over there, you'd know about this stuff. You're letting this guy who's making 200 grand a year, living in a $741,000 house in Scarborough, run roughshod over taxpayers in this town. The question I get all the time from people is, what the hell are you guys doing? And I says, I don't know. They're blissfully ignorant. They don't want to be involved in this. You know, this is a separate entity. MSAD 51 is a power unto itself. I'm only up here because people complain to me. I don't have any dog in this fight, but I can see something that's wrong in this whole thing with this. I gotta read it to make sure I get it right. Critical race theory. People all over the United States are up in arms about this. You gotta go on YouTube and just type in critical race theory and see some of the town meetings and some of the school board meetings where people are screaming about this. And guess who's complaining about the most? Black parents. Because they're finding this to be working against their family. They're not happy about it. And basic universal income, something that Ann Maskewitz is in favor of, is strictly a communist income distribution process. And when I say she's a wannabe communist, I'm not joking. That's her manifesto. When I say that she wants to hate America, she does it every chance she gets. And I'm gonna publish an email that she sent to me and an email I sent back to her. It's gonna come on my website, hopefully in the next few days, and just give you a taste of what it's like dealing with Ann. Unbelievable. And I'm glad she put it in writing, put it in an email to me. I think I pretty much covered my shopping list here, but I can tell you something, folks. The town is more divided than you realize because a lot of people are afraid to come forward. I don't worry about what anyone says about me. But the way they attack people that are against this cockamamie program is they stop by calling them a racist. I'm not a racist. I know plenty of black people and I've had relationships with black people. And I understand. My time's up. I appreciate it. I just think you guys ought to do some research. Do some work. Thank you.
Anybody else? I got it. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? My name's Kathy Harper and I live at 102 Blanchard Road. And I'm glad that Bill brought up the issue about speeding because that's why I'm here tonight. And I know you've probably seen me before, those of you who've been on the council for a while. But it just seems like it's an ongoing problem and it doesn't seem to be improving. And it seems to have gotten much worse during the pandemic. Because people, a lot of people weren't driving, but the ones that were driving felt that they could just speed up and down Blanchard Road as if it's a raceway. And it really needs to have some kind of balance struck in terms of the people that live on the road and using it as for commerce. And I know a lot of people need to go from the middle of Cumberland or the foreside over to West Cumberland, Gray or whatever. But it is a neighborhood. I mean, people do live there. I don't know if you know where my house is, but it's almost approximately halfway between the church and the fairgrounds. And it was built by one of the Blanchards. Now that it's 200th anniversary. And actually, there's a picture out here in the hallway, and the road actually ended there. So there wasn't this connection through town. And a lot of people are using the road to bike ride. A lot of people, as you know, trying to improve their exercise during the pandemic. Families have moved in along Blanchard Road, people with young children. We've lived there since 1987, so I can really see what's transformed over those years. I mean, when we moved there, Glenview wasn't even there. So I mean, just the volume of traffic and cars. And it's just, I think, just total disrespect for the law in terms of people not obeying the speed limit. I mean, I admit, I go over a few 35 or whatever, but not to the point of 60, 65. One of my neighbors up the street that lives on the corner of Bruce Hill Road, she said she was out walking her dog the other morning, 6 o'clock in the morning, and someone goes by going about 60 miles an hour. She said, is that really necessary? I mean, maybe they're late for work or whatever, but you know, she felt unsafe. My neighbor next door has two young children. He said they have to run across the street to the neighbors so they can get over to Glenview to ride their bikes and walk. I mean, it's just very dangerous. I've almost been rear-ended many times trying to turn in my driveway and then have someone try to pass me on the right. It's just gotten out of control. So I just want to share that with you and feel like Bill has been very responsive in terms of communicating with the police chief and realizing that it's a problem. And there was actually, the speed sign was out there today. And I did notice that more people seem to be slowing down. So maybe it's working, but it has to be consistent. And it is an issue. And if, you know, the rest of the parts of town have 35 miles an hour. And I don't think people living on the foreside would be that happy with the volume of speeding that's going up and down all the time on Blanchard Road. Any questions, sir?
Thanks, Kathy. I do appreciate it.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bill Kenny, Three Friar Lane. I don't have any complaints. I think you're doing a hell of a job. And anyway, I'm here to remind people that on Wednesday night, the Cumberland Historical Society is having a speaker here about Francis Perkins. The speaker's coming from the Francis Perkins Center up in Gdammersgarter. There's plenty of room to come in person. It's also gonna be shown on the Town Channel. But she's a remarkable woman. She's the longest-serving, continuous-serving cabinet member in our history. She's from Maine. She served as Secretary of Labor under Franklin Roosevelt. If you like Social Security, you can thank her. If you like the labor laws and the women laws that were enacted because of her work, you can thank her. So she's a remarkable person. I think it'd be a wonderful program. And even though it's gonna be televised, we'd like to have some people here to support us this Wednesday evening at 6:30. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Next?
Hi, my name's Nicole Nevilleus and I reside at 354 Blanchard Road Extension. So good evening, Chair, members of the board. And sorry, Bill, you have to listen to me say this again. Bill heard me during the planning committee meeting. And when Kathy reached out to me to ask if I would be willing to share my experience with the board tonight in regards to the speeding issues, I said I'd be more than happy to come up. Folks seem to think since Blanchard Road Extension is the end of the extension, end of the road, that's a nice, quiet little road. Currently, the planning board has 17 new homes that will be going in for Blanchard Oaks. We've just approved the additional races at the racing track. And we have three new homes going down the end of the extension. I love growth in the town of Cumberland and I fully support the racing. But what a lot of people don't realize is that people don't know how to turn right to get to the fairgrounds. The sign's not there anymore. So people go left instead of right. They miss that dead end sign because it's so far back that they don't see it. So then they don't turn right on Orchard. So the people that missed turning that right, so they go down the extension. And when they realize they've gone the wrong direction, they love to speed out of there because they're pissed like, God damn it, I missed the curve. So I'm gonna drive on out of here as fast as I can. So the increase in traffic coming to the fairgrounds certainly exacerbate that. We have a lot of families that walk along that road with their dogs, their kids. They think, oh, it's gonna be quiet to ride their bikes. So 17 new families means more landscapers, more UPS deliveries, more FedEx deliveries. And I can tell you already, those service people already haul down Blanchard Road Extension. For a short space of road, it is a speedway down there. But because we're a little bit less populated, I think it gets a little bit less attention. But you know, what's the cost of a human life, right? Like, it doesn't matter whether we have less people down there, whether we're considered rural or not. I was almost hit, along with a bicyclist last summer, because somebody came toothed fast down Blanchard Road Extension, saw a woman turning around in the dirt road, overcorrected trying not to hit her, nearly hit me, well out of the way on the other side of the road, overcorrected, and then nailed the neighbor's mailbox, where their two- to three-year-old daughter had just been standing, not even five minutes before. And you know, I see the landscaping vehicles coming down. There's a local landscaper that lives down in the area and his staff over the summer loves to use it as a speedway. You know, it's my mailbox has been knocked down. There were tire marks from somebody going off the road on Blanchard Road Extension. And you know, just this weekend, it looked like around the corner, somebody decided they were gonna go off the road at the corner of Skilling and Blanchard and hit the daycare company's fence. So it's just, as the town grows, it's becoming more of a challenge. And you know, I addressed this with the planning committee who said, well, we just, you know, we just do the planning stuff. I've called the police. But you know, again, we're the extension, right? You know, they're gonna go to the main road. They're gonna go to Route 100. And you know, my ask of the town in the council is to consider, are there other ways that could help us improve the situation that we have here? You know, before somebody's dog getting hit and it's somebody's kid. I run up and down the streets of Cumberland training for marathons. And I know this problem's not just isolated. You know, I run in front of Kathy's house all the time. And I'm sorry, the timer shut off on the computer, so I have no idea what time it is. One minute. Awesome. I also want to say that I'm not your proverbial Karen. I'm a born and bred Boston driver, so that should tell you that I have a healthy fear of Cumberland police when it comes to sticking to the speed limits. So you know, it's not the first time I've come up here about the concerns in that area of West Cumberland. And you know, it would just be nice that in the 10 years that I've lived here and in the several times I've come up here, to actually see some change happen and just show some support for the lives of the people in our neighborhood. I know a number of parents are watching. I'm the citizen that emailed and I really appreciate that you addressed that tonight. A number of my neighbors are watching right now because they do care so deeply about this issue. So thank you, board.
Thank you, Nicole.
Can I respond to her just briefly?
Sure.
I had a neighbor on my road also share similar concerns off Middle Road. And I was able to forward it to the police chief. And he does appreciate hearing information from the citizenry about where the particulars trouble spots are. But in the response to this citizen, he wrote, "The good news is that our officers recently moved from their COVID posture, where they are stopping vehicles only for issues directly related to immediate public safety concerns, to a traditional posture with stepped-up traffic enforcement." So because of COVID and the masking and the face-to-face interactions, they've been, much like the state was instructed to do by the governor, she's like, don't stop unless you're gonna give a ticket. Which I know Chris loves that idea. Don't stop anybody unless you're gonna give them a ticket. But he did say that. So I'm hopeful that with the increased awareness, that people will slow down just because they think there's going to be an increased presence.
And because of Nicole's comments at the planning board meeting, we're also putting a sign up right at Skilling's Road where you go left or right. Big sign will say "Two Fairgrounds Right" and a dead end sign just above Stonegate. So it'll be hopefully a little bit better, but.
Mr. Chairman?
George?
I'd just like to answer what Kathy Harper mentioned, that if the same situation existed on Foreside Road, people would set up and take notice. The same situation does exist. I mean, this pandemic is, I think, largely responsible for. But there's no question that certain individuals are doing 60 miles an hour where they ought to be doing 35 or 40. And you know, it's maybe few and far between, but it doesn't take many to upset a neighborhood. But so the police have their work cut out for them.
We don't have a noise ordinance, so. Anything else from the council? Chris?
Hi, I'd like to first ask for two minutes to rebut some of the comments I heard from other members, just real quickly. First of all.
Chris, can you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Chris Nagel. I have lived in West Cumberland since 1988. I'm a trustee at the local church at the corner. I coached in the soccer team stuff and was on the planning board for 12 years. And I come here from time to time and stir things up. So with respect to traffic, I just want to remind you, we have an unnecessary stop sign at the intersection of Blanchard Road and Orchard Road, I mean, and Skilling Road. And as someone that goes east towards town center, I still see at least, I'm in the intersection, like, people coming the other way pause. They don't know what to do. They think I'm gonna go straight. And I just want to remind you, you're leaving it there against the wishes of your engineer. I also want to respond to the comments of the first gentleman, only to say that I found his comments kind of angry and I found them kind of hurtful. Plus, I found them misdirected because my understanding is you don't run the school department. My understanding is the school board elected by people from two different towns are running a school board that makes all the decisions about that kind of stuff, including who to hire for superintendent. And I also believe that your role is to find a whole lot of money to meet their budget. So I guess on behalf of the public, I just wanted to apologize to you guys for having to listen to that. I thought it was misplaced. Now, with my five minutes, I will do my very best. I recently had to file a complaint against two officers of the Cumberland Police Department. And I'm not here to tell you the story. But what I found odd was when I went down to file my paperwork at the window, the only piece of information available to me on the wall was instructions on how to file a complaint against a Cumberland police officer. There was no, hey, if no one's here, we'll be back. The only thing you get to see when you come to our police department is instructions on how to file a complaint against one of your officers. That's really strange, at least to me. So it suggests that it's a common kind of thing. We get so many requests. We might as well put it right up here. And it got me to thinking. So I think it's becoming more obvious that police officers perform poorly and even commit crimes. And their peers cover it up, so no one knows about what happened and they are not charged. That's called the blue wall by some people. For example, in our own state, state police under heavy fire by the newspaper because of the awful things I read about what they let their own get away with. And I just heard on the news tonight, the head of the police saying, you know, we are a group of integrity and we're much better than all the other departments in the state. In other words, he ignored the allegations and made me think of you guys. So if he says he's better than you, then it, you know, it's just bad. Boston, Massachusetts, there's been a high-ranking official that's been abusing children for decades to the knowledge of his peers with no consequences. This is a systemic problem. This is a systemic problem that was on the national news tonight for ten minutes. And of course, I don't want to remind you, but when there were credible allegations made against our police department by a member of the bar who would lose her license if she was lying, you guys accepted a report saying there was no evidence of any problem because the police officers couldn't remember. That's called a blue shield, and you're endorsing it. So, I believe that the police department in our town is supposed to be a community police force, not an aggressive, "I want to arrest you" police force, which has been my experience. I will say that many other of our police officers are very good. But I know of at least one and possibly two that I do not think are good. So, and by comparison, in my profession, any allegation that's investigated by the bar is a matter of public record, no matter what the result, no matter who did it. We're not afraid to tell you who amongst us has screwed up and who amongst us has even been investigated. And the Cumberland Police Department, I cannot remember in the time I've been here ever hearing of any officer being reprimanded or disciplined, causing the town to know about it. Maybe I'm wrong. It doesn't happen very often.
Chris, two minutes, you've got one minute left.
I'm gonna be trying to figure out how many complaints are filed in our town. I'm gonna be trying to figure out what they're all about. And I hope I have your support. It's time to be transparent and not cover up what's been going on, within the limits of the law. And I'm gonna encourage anyone who is voting in the upcoming election for council people to vote for anyone who has not been on the council before. Because with all due respect, I like almost all of you, I like all of you, I respect a lot of your decisions. Not this one, not this policy, and not this culture. So I hope citizens consider other people to sit up here and manage the police department. Because you guys aren't doing anything that I'm aware of. And I hope you also support legislation, which is being considered, that will take down qualified immunity and other things. This town manager comes in here and just assumes that you agree. There's a lot of arguments on both sides of the quality immunity situation, and I'm not sure any of you have heard the other side articulated. But what I just heard tonight was a knee-jerk reaction by law enforcement, and you're gonna sign a letter outside of the public view that no one's gonna see because we just assume you don't want to support this. I would encourage you, before you take any action on behalf of the town, to have a public hearing and listen to the other side. Something our country has stopped doing. And I hope it doesn't happen here. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sean?
Sean McBride, Cumberland Center. After watching some of the comments last meeting, I thought there was a need to kind of reset some of the facts on how we got here and sort of also, man, as this isn't the town you grew up in. This town's not the town from forty years ago, twenty years ago, or even five years ago. This town was once fairly balanced regarding political items. What I've experienced over the last ten months is that dissenting opinion is not welcome anymore in Cumberland, Maine. It's being stomped out. It's all political whether or not you wish to believe that or not. And whether or not you support my use of the First Amendment is your own opinion. Just realize it currently speaks for everyone. I've done my diligence and have not broken any laws. If any of you wish to talk about treating our community with decency, I will certainly speak to you one-on-one. But mainly, I've just documented the bad decisions that MSED-51 has made, and there's been a ton of them. So I see there are five main issues currently in Cumberland. Lack of transparency by MSED-51 regarding Greeley students indoctrination into critical race theory. Division of this community when MSED-51 called us all white supremacists nearly a year ago. A venomous cancel culture scaring people from voicing their concerns publicly. Lack of accountability for MSED-51 decisions and poor leadership. I estimate that the town of Cumberland and North Yarmouth through MSED-51 have spent upwards of a combined $250,000 of hard-earned tax dollars during the last two years on critical race theory. For FY 1920, there were four alleged racist incidents in Greeley, all through grades six through eight. Twenty-two hundred students over nine months in three buildings. There were four incidents, all in the middle school. There's been two years of secret MSED-51 Equity Committee leadership meetings. No published agendas, no calendar entries, no prior access, no published minutes, no YouTube videos. It's almost like a secret society. All members of this Equity Leadership Committee were hand-selected, and nearly all are registered Democrats. Some are left-wing Democrats, and believe me when I say again, it's entirely political. From MSED-51's own website, there are dozens of examples of critical race theory. But first, what is critical race theory, or CRT? It states that racism and white supremacy exists everywhere. Every situation, organization, school, town council, human relationship, every single decision you've ever made. Any criticism of this ideology is seen as proof that the dissenter's a racist. Simply put, if you're not an anti-racist, then you're a racist. CRT is unconstitutional and a violation of the Equal Protection Clause to single out one particular race for shaming or discrimination. It's also a violation of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. MSED-51 is currently breaking the law in its teaching to students about CRT. The town may be breaking the law by funding that. Many parents across the US are now taking schools to court because they're fed up and they're finally woken up. CRT is the antithesis of Martin Luther King Jr., when he stated, "I have a dream," and that people would not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. MLK would probably be ashamed of Greeley's decision currently. There are so many different pieces off the equity page. Equity trainings for all district staff focused on systematic racism. Think about the amount of payroll spent on those efforts. Audits of social studies and English to ensure introduction of racism in the 21st century. And to provide a diverse set of authors. Wanting to do Black Lives Matter week at Greeley. Anti-defamation league's training of middle school seventh and eighth graders, a four-day incentive training of grades seven through eight, who then provide the training to sixth-grade classmates. They changed the word to "microaggressions," which is more subtle and unintentional, but it's still a form of prejudice. It doesn't sound as bad when you call kids racist, if you just talk about microaggressions. Third-grade guidance programs incorporate lessons learning about race and skin color. Third grade, that's happening at Greeley right now. So far, nobody's been able to provide real examples of systematic or institutional racism in our community. That's because it's a myth. Superintendent Jeff Porter took the CRT hook, line and sinker. Counselor Foster, when asked a number of weeks ago to describe it, spoke about taking a spot in college because of a relationship her parents had. That's not institutional racism, that's just good parenting. So ask yourself, why in this town are we willing to fund MSED-51 for this type of indoctrination efforts? Why is the teaching occurring outside of the home, where parents should be doing the parenting? And not why the Greeley Teachers Union and MSED-51 administration decide what to teach your kids? So it's a toxic situation, it's flat-out unacceptable, and it's not something our children should be subject to. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Bill? No, that's fine. You want to say something? Okay.
I do. I wasn't referring to critical race theory when I made my comments a few months ago. I was talking about privilege, and they are different. So please, I just want to make sure that that's no misconstrued interpretation. Again, different, but go ahead.
Rebuttal, Mr. Nagel is a prime example of somebody who is so uninformed that his comments about what I said are just ridiculous. I've done almost 850 articles on my website, I have not been sued for one article. You can't sue me for telling the truth about something. You can't sue me for telling the truth about Ann's actual beliefs that she espouses every chance she gets. And I'll tell you something else about the lawyers that police themselves. That is the hugest myth in this state. People outside the state of Maine make fun of our judicial system. It's just unbelievably bad. We have a judge called Jeff Moskowitz, who was told by the Chief Justice Lee Softly to have a hearing and to apologize to a press-hall reporter for ordering him not to report what was testified to an open court. Obviously, that was wrong. But Moskowitz is probably the worst judge in the state of Maine, and they allow him to run rampant over people in one case after another. And boy, I know a lot of the cases. I'll tell you something about the Board of Overseers. They're there to protect the lawyers from being sued by clients. They're not there to help clients that have been screwed by their lawyers. I know that factually. And there's plenty of people out there that have had bad experiences, not only in the court system, but with lawyers. And I can testify all day long about what I know about the Goddard and Atlatlums in this state, the judges in this state, the district attorneys in this state, and a lot of the top lawyers in this state are crooked beyond all words. And I can stand by every word I've just said. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon, my name's Nick Beegan. I'm sure you heard my name. I debated on coming here tonight. I was gonna go to the school board meeting, but I decided to come speak here because there's actually a conversation that happens, which you don't get at the school board. A little bit of who I am, I live on Newell Ridge Road. I have three daughters, ten, eight, and six. Moved to Cumberland from Freeport about four or five years ago for the school system. I'm from Maine, I grew up in Sabados. I'm a Maine by heart. I, to date, have really not been super involved in things at school. I have coached soccer, rec soccer, Cumberland Soccer Club. And I do run an internship program through the pathways, through the high school. A little bit about my professional background, I used to work for FEMA. I spent eight years at FEMA. And 2013, I started a company with two other gentlemen, and we've grown that now today to be a fairly sizable global firm, about 120 employees. We do HR technology consulting. As you can see, I'm a little bit emotional because this whole topic of getting our kids back to school has been very frustrating for me. I did start a group called Back to Five. That group started here in Cumberland. We had about 200 parents that joined. And it was a pretty amazing thing. People that were reaching out to me, saying, "You know what? Jeez, I thought I was alone, I thought I was alone." And it quickly grew to a statewide thing. We're now at the 3,300 people. Cumberland has 9% of the representation in that group. The school board members, let me take a step back. Why I started the group? I originally started working, or trying to work, with Mr. Porter in late January. See, part of my business is a, we're a Coltrix partner. If you're not familiar with what Coltrix is, it's the world's largest survey provider. I have data scientists that put surveys together. We work at municipalities, we work with large companies like Nike. And I offered to him one simple service. I said, "I would love to see another survey sent out like you did back in July." Because I thought it was well-done. It was, you know, informative, they gathered the right data to make what I thought was the right decision to open up the school this past year. He accepted, he acknowledged my email and appreciated the offer, that I didn't hear anything from him. Mid-February, he sent out an email that basically said, "We're going to stay status quo with the hybrid model." And that's where I started getting a little concerned. Because at that point, I'm thinking, "Why can't we not go back to school? Why can't our kids not go back to school?" Like I said, I have three daughters, and I see what's happening to them. It's not good. And so at that point, that's when I started the Back to Five Facebook group. I since then sent Jeff and Tyler McGinley a few additional emails, just asking questions. Simply asking questions. And mind you, I've never had a single interaction with these individuals prior to this time. The CRT stuff, all the, I stayed clear of that. I've been busy running a business. I don't have time to get involved in those things, or I thought I didn't have time. And Jeff offered to have a meeting with myself and another parent. We had a Zoom meeting. And I had, we had questions, we had a great discussion, I thought. And I asked some simple things. I'm a data guy. I said, "Can you just show me what has been done on the spatial studies?" Right? That's what we keep hearing, "We don't have the space, we don't have the space. We need a new school, we're overrun." "Send me the data." "Yep, we have the data, we'll get that to you." "Check, good." We talked about staffing issues. I want to know the details of staffing issues. You know, we have teachers that have gone for the entire year. We have teachers that are out because of childcare. But I wanted specific numbers by school. "Yep, we can get that to you." "Good." We asked for a walkthrough. He committed to doing a walkthrough with myself and the other parent. He asked us for dates, we gave him the dates. And he later went back on his word, saying he's gonna run it through the Going to Green Committee, which they then voted down quite substantially. The four parents on the committee are the only ones that said they wanted to do it. Everybody else said they didn't. These chain of events really got me wondering what kind of school board we have keeping our superintendent accountable. I really think there's a significant amount of group think happening. For them to vote nine to zero on the committee's recommendation when the committee themselves voted down just doing a walkthrough, simply just walk through the buildings, see what's available. There's pictures that are circulating, yeah, on my group, that show cafeteria, the gym, full of furniture. Mobile Mini's one of my customers. I'll go get shipping containers, I'll bring them here. The thing is, the board and the superintendent have a lot of parents in this community that want to help, and they shut them out. They shut people like me out that would do everything. I would take a month off of work to go get my kids back to school. But they continuously just play this card that we don't have the space. And we're working hard, we're working hard. Well, if my leadership team kept telling me they're working hard and I have to fire or let go employees because of COVID, we're not working hard enough, we're not doing the right things. So, yes, we did start the recall. Because we truly feel we have an incompetent board. I know, I do not know any of them individually. Maybe one, because I coached his daughter. I'm at five. So I'll just leave you with one last thing, which has been quite interesting with the recall. There are a lot of people that want to sign. There are people that want to help get signatures. But they won't, because they're fearful of retaliation. And I've experienced it myself. And I'm a good person. I just want my damn kids back in school. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. I think just one thing the council may not be aware of is that the Portland Press Herald, as well as the Forecaster, has requested copies of the signed petition ballots once they have been submitted. And there are folks that are just unwilling to even put it to a vote. And that's part of our charter, whether you agree with it or not. Things should be allowed. We've had a lot of initiative items that the council has put out there. And we've said, "The voters, if they want to basically turn it down, let them speak at the ballot." So that's been one of the things that has been unusual in this recall attempt. So I just wanted the council to know that as well.
Thank you, Bill. Legislation and policy. Brenda?
Item 21-046, to hear a report from the Finance Director regarding third-quarter financials.
Helene, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you.
If that's okay, thank you.
Just gonna give five seconds to see if Bill can get the computer back up.
Okay. Earlier this evening, Helene came to us at the Finance Committee and the council and talked about our financial status. And as soon as, maybe Bill can get this back up. We can discuss it. Blame it on Bill Kenny, who was up here when it went off.
Oh.
He stepped out of the room.
And he's not here anymore.
I think he's coming back.
Okay. All right. I'll make sure he knows about that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're on. So, this is third quarter, July through March. So, revenues overall for the general fund are 86% collected. That's an 8% increase over last year, year-to-date, or about $400,000. We're really in good shape with our revenue collection. Our controllable expenses, again, were down 4% over last year, as well as lower than 75% overall. That equates to about $440,000 that were under on our expenses, which is a great thing to, a great place to be as well. And then our fixed assets, we're also a little behind, and that's mostly due to the timing on our bond payments. When we review our selected revenues, you'll see with our excise tax, state sharing, and permit impact fees, we all, we exceeded all three of those. We exceeded our budget. The excise tax, we're actually $185,000 higher than we were last year, as well as $200,000 higher on our state revenue sharing than we were last year this time. And as far as our impact fees, it's pretty substantial as well. We're about $82,000 collected year-to-date over last year. Our emergency transportation billing is under budget and under last year, but again, these services are provided on an as-need basis. Here, we're going over some selected expenses. These three actually departments take about 42% of our budget, so that's why we're showing you them. They would have the biggest impact on our budget. You can see that all three of them are under budget for the year-to-date, as well as compared to last year. For policemen and public services, some of that is due to lapped salary. We had employees that are no longer with us, and we did not rehire during this year. We set up Valhalla, so you can see revenues against expenses. In the past, we kind of had that separated out. Also, doing very well is the Valhalla revenues. We saw a very strong collection on memberships and greens fees this year, and we're seeing that continuously through year-end. Expenses are not anything to worry about. They are where they should be, but overall, you could see we're in a much better place than we were or expected to as far as budget. Recreation Department, again, looking at it all on one page. Our after-school program is doing okay. If you remember, we were discussing that during the year, that when school closed, the school closed, that there was a $7,000 loss to after-school program. And you can see that happening this year, where our collection is 90%, where it was last year, 94%. All the other revenues as well, we're still getting that continuous, not doing as well as we would have because of COVID. I did provide in your packet, you will have like a little bit more detail, but you can see overall, though, on expenses, our expenses are down overall as well. And that goes, it goes together with what's happening with the revenues. When you look at the detail on the recreational budget, you'll also notice that each of the programs are actually doing fairly well. It's the amount that we need in order to cover our administrative costs. So, right now, we're showing a loss of about $148,000, and this is gross. This doesn't include what that share to North Yarmouth is yet. I have provided additional information in the back. You have additional detail if you have any questions on that. One thing I also wanted to point out on that detail, I did show along the top of the revenue line, you'll see that I also provided our tax, property tax collection year-to-date. We're at 97.7, so we're actually, we're actually less than 3% needing to be collected at this point.
Thank you, Helene. It was a great report. Thank you. Do we have questions from the council?
I was just going to maybe point out, we've always had this conversation about Valhalla and whether it's an asset or a deficit to the community. And I think sometimes it might be helpful to compare that to Twin Brook Facility, the Town Forest, Rines, and the library. And, you know, it might be, it might be interesting to see a slide sometime. It's just, these are what some of the other assets that the public uses cost the community. It might show us a more realistic picture. Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Bob. Any other questions? Anything from the public? Any items from the, questions from the public? Seeing none? Can I have a motion, please?
There's no motion on this one, Tom.
There's no motion?
No, it's just a here.
There is a motion. I thought there was.
I would move to accept the third quarter financial report as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
George, thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? Excellent. Thank you so much. Thanks, Helene. Good job. Brenda, next item?
21-047, to accept the modified and corrected deed and easement between the Town of Cumberland and the Forside Community Church.
Bill?
Mr. Chairman, the President of our Cumberland Cemetery Association, Bob Story, is here tonight. I've put up a map of the Forside Cemetery for you, and I'll let Bob fix this because he can explain it a lot better.
Okay, I'm Bob Story. Bob Story, President of the Association. My salary hasn't gone up much, so don't worry about my salary. I get the same thing Helfer Merrill got 40 years ago.
He was overpaid.
Yeah. So, anyhow, probably about four or five years ago, we had Dave Bouffre at Boundary Point survey our cemeteries. And what we found at the Forside Community Cemetery, it appeared that the church-owned part of the cemetery and the town-owned part of the parking lot, whether this was factual or not, we don't really know. Deeds could have been lost, or not found, or perhaps never made. So, anyhow, I was talking to Bill this year. We hold a meeting once a year in January, talk about where we've been the last year and where we're headed for the next year. And I mentioned to him about the discrepancy in the, in the survey that showed the church owns some of the cemetery and that the town perhaps owns some of the parking lot. So, Bill said, let's strain that out now because I was dealing with the church on something else. So, essentially, is what's happened here? You've hit the most, Bill?
Yeah. I can see it right on the screen.
Oh, good. Okay. Okay, how do I?
I can make it a little smaller.
Okay. Anyhow, the church is here. Most of the church is in Falmouth. This area here, perhaps the town, the town owned a portion of this. And this area in here, perhaps the church owned a portion of it. Historically, the churches in New England own the cemeteries, and at some point, municipalities one by one took over cemeteries. We have four cemeteries in Cumberland associated with churches, and we own, you guys own all four of those cemeteries now, in addition to Ferris and Moss Side. We have six cemeteries. So, anyhow, in a nutshell, what we're asking you to do is to sign a quitclaim deed, releasing any rights we may have outside of this blue circle, blue square, and the church will release a quitclaim deed, releasing anything the church may own inside the blue square. So, in addition to that, we're getting easement rights, passage rights from Forside across the church parking lot and into the cemetery that the town's never had before. Whether we needed them or not, probably not, but I think law is probably, you can't prohibit passage to the cemetery, but now we have clear, if you sign this, we have clear passage Brenda gave me one minute to talk. She's got a plane to catch, so if you have any questions, go fast.
I think Bob underscores it. He's done a lot of work with these folks, and he's done a phenomenal job as our president and keeper of all the records, which has been phenomenal. What's interesting about this cemetery is it is right on the Falmouth and Cumberland line. It is split between two communities. And what we have done with the cemeteries under Bob's leadership has been nothing short of amazing. So, I'm pretty proud of this, and when we can, when we can come in and clean these type of things up with two consenting parties, we take advantage of it. And under Bob's leadership, we've done a lot of, a lot of housekeeping that has really served this community very well.
Thank you. Phil?
I'm Phil Gleason. I'm here tonight on behalf of Forside Community Church, and I just want to thank Bob and the manager for taking the initiative and clearing up a little boundary dispute that probably has been around for at least 150 years, if not more. And I think anytime we have an opportunity to do something like this, it's good for the town and also good for the property owner. And in this case, the property owner happens to be a church. So, thank you for your help with this. Much appreciated.
Thanks, Phil.
Yeah, I would like to say, I see people come up and talk about Cumberland's best-kept secrets. Forside Cemetery is one of those best-kept secrets. It's, you stand at the gate, you stand here at the gate, you can turn around and see the ocean. Split rail fences, stone walls, tall pine trees, the church, the whole thing. The cemetery is New England. If you, you should visit it. Okay, questions? Robert?
I noticed if you scroll to your right, there's a lot of depth to that cemetery. And that, I assume it's still active, lots being sold.
Okay, let me take the cursor here. This was the original cemetery until about 1958. You all remember Bob Cram. Bob Cram facilitated the purchase of another 800 feet from the Bates family. It's along Mary Lane here. So, this much I've mapped, and that's all on the computer already to sell. Anyhow, we've gained all that, and this from my green back is all woods. So, there's, Bob purchased about, the town, I don't know how it came about, purchased 800 feet, and it's about 104 feet. So, it's about two acres. Right now, we're selling, since 1960 roughly, when these became available for sale, we've sold lots in here. So, you can see where we're, that's all we've, we've sold. Right here, I've got 41 more spaces available for sale right now. I've got 341 not available for sale, but all it takes is a mouse click, and they become available for sale at any point.
That whole parcel of land has your potential to be used at some point.
Yes, it does. The whole thing. But my point is, in 60 years, the associations hold back to about here, from here. So, you can see where we're, so another 60 years, if we sold to here, another 100, 120, so on. So, at the rate we're selling, you know, it's going to be a long time. And we do have a lot of, we do have a lot of acreage at Moss Side, and we have acreage at, I don't know if we could call it acreage, probably some acreage, at Methodist as well. The past associations have had, past leaders had some real insight here, and we're probably in great shape for several hundred years.
You mentioned a state law, and it piqued my curiosity. So, a roadside cemetery has legal access, even though it may not be necessarily owned? Is that right? Is that what you were saying?
I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, no. I was a lineman.
Phil, maybe Phil knows. But you're not saying it.
What we did here was just clarify, formalize the access, which we all thought existed on a handshake basis, but it's always good to get these things in writing when you can. So, that's what we did here.
Thanks, Phil.
It's likely the church will, I mean, the cemetery will outlast the church.
I would say so.
There's at least one church in Yarmouth that is now a homestead, so it's good to have this in the interest of the cemetery.
Anything else?
Good job, Bob. Thank you.
So, we are looking for your authorization tonight to allow me to sign the deeds, so that would be the appropriate motion.
I'll make a motion.
Please.
I move to authorize the town manager to sign the modified and corrected deeds and easements between the Town of Cumberland and Forside Community Church.
Second? Ron, second? Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda? Thank you. Next item?
21-048, to hold a public hearing to consider an act on a mass gathering permit application for the Penobscot Valley Kennel Club's Chickadee Classic Dog Show to be held at the Cumberland Fairgrounds from June 24th through June 27th.
Mr. Town Manager?
Staff recommends approval of the mass gathering permit.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Seeing none? Ron?
Mr. Chairman, I'll give you a motion. I move to approve the mass gathering permit for the Penobscot Valley Kennel Club's Chickadee Classic Dog Show to be held at the Cumberland Fairgrounds from June 24th through June 27th, 2021.
Thank you, Ron. Do we have a second?
Second.
Allison has second. Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda. Next item? Brenda?
21-049, to hold a public hearing to consider an act on the adoption of the FY22 municipal budget.
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are now close to the finish line, I would say, or at the finish line with the FY22 municipal budget. We started this process back in the first Monday in March and have met every single Monday since then to discuss the FY22 budget. As you can recall, the budget that we just are coming to a close on June 30th is the identical budget we had the year before. When COVID hit, the council basically, after adopting a budget that had seen several increases, directed staff to go back to the drawing board and basically come in with a flat budget for the current year, which we have done. That has included a hiring freeze on employees that would leave, and we have done so. We have, I think presently, about five vacant positions, and will, most of those will be reinstated in January. We're really trying to be careful with ramping up this budget. We pretty much decimated the capital program last year, and we'll be bringing it back slowly. Fortunately, we have TIF funds that are eligible to be used in many of those, many of those areas in town, so we will be paving, but not as much as we were pre-COVID. We'll be looking at, as I said, reinstating most of those positions in January of the coming year. The result of the The result of this, this year's increase in the budget, and I'll go over by larger categories in a second, was a little, was about 840 or $50,000 increase in, in expenses and about a little over, almost $700,000 in new, new revenues that we'll be talking about as well. So with that all said, we saw just under a 1.0, I think 1.47% increase in, in the tax rate, or about 30 cents. This is a very preliminary number. As you know, the assessor will be coming to you in July to set the tax rate. We feel very confident it will be no higher than that. And, you know, possibly it could be lower if, if his numbers continue to improve as they have been most of the winter. That impact was basically between the, the school and the town and the county. It came out to 30, 30 cents. And you can see, I put a chart up there where we've been over the course of the last five or six years. In 2016, we were at $5.39. And this year, we're at $5.49. So about a 10 cent increase over the last six years in the mill rate. And a 10 cent increase, you know, it's, it depends, it's all, it's all in how much value the community has. Right now, we're at about $1.5 billion. So when you spread that over a larger number, it does make a difference. And that was a much smaller number six years ago. So anyway, when we look at, when we look at the budget, we'll also see line items that are familiar to you in wages and salary, benefits, utilities, general expenditures, building expenses, contracted services. And then you get to the last line item, transfers. And that, that's a little bit of an accounting anomaly, I'll call it, because I really would like to see it all broken out the way we budget it. And most of our reserve funds are shown there. The net transfers in on the line item is 195,000. Well, we have $525,000 in expenses that would normally have to go toward, toward this budget. But we have a $330,000 use of debt service reserve. And that debt service reserve is used to flatten out our annual debt service. So the net impact to that line is about 195,000. And that's really just an accounting issue more than anything else. When we look at the budget again in, in the big picture, I'm going to try to shrink this a little bit so it'll fit better to the screen. I guess that's not the way to do it. Where are you hiding?
Down at the bottom.
Oh, it came back. Okay. So when we look at the, the big numbers, it's 855,756 dollar increase. There is your transfers. It's now 200,000 instead of 195, because it's 5,000 greater than the year before. So these are the increases to this year's budget. Wages and salary make up about 15% of that. Benefits, about 18%. General expenditures are down about 106,000. I apologize for that. Debt service is shown here at an increase of 21%, but that's offset by about $320,000 in transfers in. And then you have contracted services, grounds, maintenances, and supplies, tools and equipment. So that is basically the entire pie chart of the increases we've seen this year. Our biggest offsets to these increases have been state revenue sharing, which has improved dramatically, more so than we ever expected. We budgeted about 500,000 and we're anticipating closer to $870,000 in receipts this year, which is a great windfall. Any other thing that is just, just an anomaly, and I guess that's why they call it an anomaly, because it's very difficult to explain, is excise tax. Excise tax in this community continues to rise. We already have met our budget through three quarters and we have a quarter left to collect. So we feel excise taxes are very, very strong. What's interesting in excise taxes, and we do have to be aware, is that 10% by the category is in the high end of autos. And that comprises about 30% of our revenues in excise tax. 50% of our vehicles are in six years or older in this community. That's a big, big chunk of, I'm just calling it my stability fund. So 50% of the vehicles are less, are basically reached that six-year excise tax level that you can't pay, that's the max you're going to pay, that's the minimum you're going to pay, you're right there. So it's really interesting when you look at by category, the value of those cars, they only comprise about 10 or 15%. By volume, though, it's the greatest number we have. So it's awesome to have all the new cars. It really is, because they do bring in additional excise tax. But the two and three and four-year-old cars also help stabilize that and keep it up. We don't know how long that's going to last. I would say, I'd reach out to Ron, he watches this closer than anybody. But as long as these interest rates and as long as these, these deals continue in the auto industry with 0% financing for six, seven, eight years, it's, it doesn't make sense for a lot of people not to buy a new vehicle. So they are. And we are the benefactor of that. But that too will come to an end soon. And we haven't budgeted the full amount of what we believe we will receive in excise tax. We're always a little bit nervous that that bubble is going to break the year we do that. So we've always been about 80 to 90% at best in collection of excise tax in the, in the next year. So I am pretty comfortable that the budget we're presenting you tonight is a responsible budget, one that meets the needs of the community and one that Helene and I can work very hard at bringing home to you at budget for next year. We still have some work to do. We still have to get those reserve accounts for the capital program up. But we can't do it all in one year. We talked about this last year. We knew this was going to be a couple to three years of recovery. But we're going to be looking at other things as well at the same time. We've got an ambulance on the horizon. We've got a solar farm we have to pay for on the horizon. We have some personal protective gear that we have to pay for that is beyond our means through the operating budget. So we will look to ask for your assistance to fill those gaps as we go forward. But I think what we've done through the work of the finance committee is present what we feel is a, a budget that we can sustain and keep moving forward on. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. There's about 37 worksheets behind this. So just let me know where you want to go to and we can, we can go there if you have any specific questions.
Any questions from the council?
I was so impressed with the excise information. And another thing that I noticed, you broke out the years of the cars, but the months that the cars have been purchased and registered is even across the board as well. So it's not like, oh, it's fall, let's buy a new car. It's spring, let's buy a new car. It's pretty consistent, month to month to month.
And Whitney Miller, our assistant clerk, who you will see at your next meeting when we do the Senior Circuit Breaker Program, she's the one that compiled all that data. So kudos to her, as quickly as she put it together. So when you see her next time, Bob, don't yell at her.
Ron?
Just one thing on excise tax. I think you would see it even higher if the manufacturers could produce more vehicles. I have more pickups on my lot right now than most of the new car dealers do in Portland, because they can't get the raw materials to build these vehicles. Today, I went to O'Conner's in Portland. The town of Gray bought a new plow truck. The plow truck, it was a Volvo, showed up at O'Conner's with no headlights in it, because they can't get the raw materials to build the headlights. They have a deadline where the truck has to be delivered with a plow and with a body on it. So they hired me to haul it to H.P. Fairfield and Skowhegan, because they can't drive it, because there's no headlights. And this is what the manufacturers are running into, whether it's an automobile or an ATV or a boat or a motorhome, you can't get the raw materials to produce these vehicles. So they're sitting on the assembly line, three quarters finished, waiting for these materials. And believe me, that, I know some of the salesmen personally at the new car dealers, and they're just chomping at the bit, because they've got people that would buy a pickup today or tomorrow, but they cannot get the vehicle that they want. So I think this is going to continue for a little while, because the interest rates are so low. And you can stretch a payment out over 72 or 84 months now. So I don't think it's anything that's going to end real quick if they can just get the raw materials to get these vehicles produced. But I am shocked at the numbers, Bill, that there are that many older vehicles still on the road, which is not a bad thing either. I mean, it's just, it's, it's showing that vehicles do last now. You know, they're not wore out in four years anymore than time for a new one.
Ron, I have a friend in Virginia who went to get new headlights in her car, because she had some fogging in them. And the dealer didn't have them and told her to go on Amazon and order them. And then they would put them in.
I have a Buick Lacrosse that's in my shop right now that I'm waiting on two new headlights for, and they're $1,100 a piece.
But Amazon, I thought, oh my God, what are they not dealing with?
Ron, explain what happened to the Explorer, the police department that we had sitting at your shop.
Yeah, I mean, it's just crazy what goes on nowadays. You're talking about the...
The, the one that you, we couldn't get on the road because of...
Oh, yeah, there's an airbag sensor in one of the Cruises that was default in one of the doors. They could not find one anywhere in the country. So therefore, you had to get a loaner out of Massachusetts.
Drive that for...
For what, three months, I think?
Almost four.
Almost four months, the thing set, because they can't get an airbag sensor that we could put in our shirt pocket that's smaller than my cell phone. And it's just crazy that a $200 pack can hold up a $40,000 vehicle. But it, it's, every industry has got the same problem. I mean, it's just the raw materials, they can't get them produced to put these vehicles together. I mean...
And you saw this morning on the news, the, even the rental car business now is insanity trying to get a rental car, because they're just not available. Lots are all vacant. So people are renting their own vehicles out.
What's happening is people want to buy a new vehicle. They've sold their old one, they go to the dealer, they can't get it. Now they don't have any transportation, so they're going and renting a vehicle. I mean, it's crazy. I don't know what the new normal is going to be in this world. I really don't. I mean, it's just, it's out of control, but...
Thanks, Ron.
I'll give you a motion if you'd like.
Yes, we would. Thank you.
I move to set the municipal FY22 general fund expenditure budget of $11,463,545.0 and the general fund non-property tax revenue budget of $5,679,136.0 to offset the impact of property taxes recommended by the finance committee.
Second. We have a first and a second. And we have as a comment, Bill?
Yes. My name's Bill Stiles from Range Road. I was fortunate enough to sit in all, in all of the budget hearings.
Yes, you were.
And I have to say, I'm very proud of the work the council did. Well, thank you.
Thank you. We have a first and a second on the motion. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda?
Coming from Bill Stiles, that's a compliment.
Yes, it is.
And Bill, thank you for coming to all those meetings. We do appreciate it. Okay, new business. Why don't we start off with Shirley?
All right. I was wondering which way you were going to go. I think I'll start with new business, addressing Mr. Doyle's comments about the district and using CCI. And I just want to correct the record that the MSAD is not using CCI, has not used CCI since the concerns were raised about their integrity. I was part of the discussion process along the way. And so I just wanted to correct the record for that. For him to accuse us of not paying attention, I think was a little unfair. We are paying attention, but as is pointed out, it's not our, not our job.
Shirley, would you clarify what CCI is?
If I could remember what they are.
For the public.
They are... I don't remember what they are. I don't remember the group.
I don't either. That's why...
I know. And I know, I don't even remember the name of the woman that he was referencing, you know? I don't, I don't remember. So you could look it up if you wanted to publicly.
I wasn't trying to embarrass you, Shirley. I really sincerely was just thinking about the acronym, that's all.
And the name of the woman, who's the executive director, whose profanity he did correctly quote, is no longer associated with the district. I'd like to congratulate Allison for being a panelist for GP COG event coming up. I got that email today. If you want to be an elected leader in your community, you could go to a GP COG event and Allison will be one of the guest panelists. So congratulations for having a voice. I'd like to inform the public, well, many people know if they've been following along. I am up for reelection. I am running unopposed. And in light of all the conversation about signs, I'm not going to be putting up any signs unless someone takes out this enormous write-in campaign against me. So if you're looking for my signs and thinking, she doesn't have signs, she doesn't care about her job or representing us, that's just not true. I'm being respectful of all the people who are tired of signs. That's, that's all.
Thank you, Shirley. Robert?
I have a little, I'm a little concerned about the public showing up here this evening and some of the things that they had to say. Certainly, traffic is, is, is one of them that... I remember Barbara Garso saying, you know, you took the country out of the country road. And when you're making nice, long, straight road, it encourages people to use it. That being said, that's, that's no excuse for speeding and I have to watch my own speed at times. But I, I really hope that we can take some measures that will discourage people from speeding on roads. I'm really upset when I hear about retribution about signing a petition. And I think that I would ask the town manager to reach out to the Forecaster and the Press Herald in a freedom of information and ask them if this is a habit they have of asking for signed petitions. If it's not, and they're just targeting the town of Cumberland for this particular petition, then they should be singled out for harassment of those who are signing the petition. I'm not in favor or against this petition, but boy, I am definitely against harassment and intimidation. And let it be said right here, I will not tolerate it. And if I find that people are, are using the name collecting as a means of retribution, look out.
Thanks, Bob. Anything else? Thank you. Just a couple of things, and it is a couple of things. Last week, we had 56 families that use our pantry, at or about 56. And we, I want to, a big thank you to those that made, that make this possible, that they're just, just amazing volunteers that we have. And then the most important news is the Cumberland Area Rides is back. And this, this is, this is terrific. We're, if you're fully vaccinated and you have, you have proof of an insurance card, you can, you can be a driver. So we're excited about that. And all I have to say is Uber groupers back. That's what I have to say. And by the way, Bill Kenny, we had technical difficulties after you were up at the podium tonight. And it was, it was, it was blamed on you. Yes, okay, just want to make sure. Allison?
I would just like to remind everyone about our Cumberland Bicentennial gear. If you can see it, this is a real Yeti and it's very cost effective. So all of the gear, my husband and son now have matching sweatshirts. They're adorable and just great, because we're not doing it to make money. So every, like, very cost effective, everyone, to get your Cumberland gear. And it's great. I will be on a panel this Wednesday through GP COG. It's virtual, so it's on Zoom. I am getting my second vaccine that morning, so I'm hopeful that I don't have any side effects. But I think what's great about it is it's... But I think what's great about it is it's all about diverse voices, and that's why the panelists were chosen and really aiming to just answer questions for folks that are maybe a bit intimidated about running for any type of public office and trying to demystify what it all means, and just encourage folks to, even if they had a fleeting thought of potentially throwing their name into the hat at any point, to just hear from kind of a diverse panel on kind of what it's been like to run, and then, once we won, reality setting in. So it's six to seven-thirty on Wednesday. If you go on Facebook, GP COG is Greater Portland.
Council of Governments.
Council of Governments, sorry. If you go onto Facebook, they have an event on their website, and you'd be able to preregister there. So I think that's all I really had.
Thank you, Allison. George?
Well, I didn't think I had anything, but I have to piggyback on Bob a little bit. In the event that the media isn't using uniform standards as far as their treatment of this petition situation, I'd be outraged, as Bob would be. Part of the reason that it concerns me is that I think without, perhaps without merit, but there is, when we get into politics, you get into the political spectrum where there are certain people on both sides of the fence who have a tendency to think that they're put upon by the media, and that the media will use underhanded tactics to keep their opinions from coming forward. So I'm sure there's a lot of people looking with a jaundiced eye at, at this directive. So it'll be interesting to see where it goes, or whether they bother to give us some details about the uniformity of the policy. That's all I have.
Thanks, George. Ron?
I have my twenty dollars for the 4H food pantry, Mr. Stiles. I want to keep this program rolling, it's a worthy program. I've donated quite generously to the food pantry. Last week, I had a load of lumber. I couldn't donate that, but I know Bob, you probably would have been one of the first ones out of the pantry with a load of lumber, but. We've had hash browns, we've had, you name it, we've had it. But the lumber wouldn't have been very good to eat, so, and that went back to China, so. I just want to keep this program rolling, it's a worthy cause, and it does great things to this community, and the food pantry is one of the greatest, so that's all I have.
Thanks, and here's my twenty dollars, just to keep up the spirit. Mr. Town Manager?
Just quickly, I think if the council gets a chance to watch the planning board meeting, I bring this back again, it really would be, if you don't watch any of the presentations, watch the last ten minutes or so. Jason Record brought up a lot of good questions related to growth, and a lot of good questions to where are we going as a community, and the Greater Portland Council of Government's growth study again that we did just a few years ago. And he mentioned, he said, you know, where, where, where is the next step? Where do we say, okay, we've checked all the boxes in the last comprehensive plan, how do we start a new comprehensive plan? And what is the process to even begin that process? So, I mean, we did have a pretty good conversation at ten o'clock at night, people were pretty burnt out, but they were very engaged, and it really comes back to you, and it really comes back to where you want to, you know, where, where do you want the community to head in the next few years? I think what we did singly in the conservation subdivision ordinance was probably the best thing to preserve Cumberland in its current state than any other piece of legislation that's ever been approved by probably any council or any planning board. When you can protect fifty percent of your acreage on a piece of property, you've done something pretty special. It doesn't happen in a lot of towns. And the way we did it protected the landowner rights and then protected, protected our community. And the Lands and Conservation Commission now has tools that they can present to the planning board and say, here's what it should look like, here's what it could look like, here's what I think, what the ordinance was intended to be. So if you get a chance to just watch those last ten minutes, it was really a good conversation. And I would encourage that, you know, perhaps this summer, we get together with a planning board in a workshop and just talk about, you know, how did the last comprehensive plan start? What's, what are the, what would be some of the mechanisms we'd need to have in place for that to happen? And, you know, a lot of times, it all began with a survey. Remember that long-winded survey? And we put a lot of time into that survey, and Shirley and George will remember, we didn't have those fluff questions. Yeah, would you like open space? It didn't say that anymore, it said, if we had to pay for it, would you like open space? And it was a very different answer in a lot of the questions. So I was really proud of the, of the survey we sent out, and we had over forty percent of the community respond to that survey, so, but that took all by itself, what was that, a couple of years, Shirley?
Yeah.
To even put the survey together.
Yeah.
So it didn't happen overnight. These things don't happen in a vacuum. With this new Zoom criteria that we have in front of us, it's totally different. It'll be a little bit different to have basically people participating from social media and from, from the virtual world, but I think it will help expand the number of people that participate, which on the Complant Committee, it wasn't really a lot. Outside of the meetings we had, we had a handful of people that showed up to public hearings, but for the most part.
But we had a huge comprehensive plan committee.
Well, yes, eighteen, eighteen, you know, the cast of Ben Hur came here, and.
And everybody came, all the time.
Everybody came, so to get around the table once was a half an hour, so.
Yeah.
It was a, it was a big deal. But what, what they've done in other communities is they've broken it down into smaller parts where they went out into different neighborhoods and had different neighborhood meetings, and with Zoom, you can do a lot of that that you couldn't do before. So technology may be our friend when it comes to these type of things. When Steve was talking about the Zoom calls tonight for council meetings, the only thing I would just caution, and I would almost ask the, the ordinance committee to really take a look at this, because if we're going to enact a council policy for Zoom meetings to be part of that, what are going to be the ground rules? And the only one ground rule I'm really concerned about is if technology fails us. Will those council votes count or not count? Will we have to suspend meetings? When we were doing just virtual meetings for a month or so, you saw what happened with some of the Zoom bombing that we were, you know, we, that fell upon us, but that wasn't even the worst of it. The worst of it is when technology failed us and we had to cancel a meeting for another month, even though all of you were here. So how do we deal with that? You know, when you're present, you're here, we have audience here, and we have a, you know, Time Warner goes down, or somebody hits a telephone pole outside of Town Hall, and, and we can't broadcast. I mean, those things do happen, but, you know, how do we, how do we deal with that? And what are, what's in place to make that so people can feel they're not being, you know, basically victimized because of technology? That's one thing. And then the last thing I have for you is the capacity of this room. This room now, per, you know, CDC and the governor's new plans, is now at seventy-five percent capacity. This is going to scare you, this number. Seventy-five percent capacity of this room is over ninety people. And I have basically kind of said, too many, too much, too much too soon. Let's try to get to fifty before we get to ninety, because I'd like to see, ninety people in this room would be pretty much, it would be very, very difficult to space out, and I, I don't know if that would be a great thing. Maybe by July, it would be a great thing, when the bulk of our community might be vaccinated, but here, not even in May yet, I think I would have some problems with putting ninety people. People have asked me about the capacity, and, you know, by Election Day, you know, fifty to sixty would be a good thing on June eighth, and then, you know, creeping back up to ninety, and then ultimately, hopefully by fall, to full capacity, I think would be a better thing. I hope not to have anything controversial on the agendas going forward, so you don't get over ninety that quick, but, but who knows? It's, to me, I don't think it's, I don't think we're ready for that yet, and I don't know if, if it'd be the smart thing to do in light of how successful we've been with just the protection we have at the dais and with the filtration system we have in the building, the increase in the filtration capacity, I think has made a significant difference in the amount of COVID cases we've had in the building, which is virtually none. Most of our quarantining has been because of, outside of our organization, not internal.
Bill, it just occurred to me, too, that one of the elements that bothered me, it doesn't bother Steve, but it bothers me, is the executive session idea, Zooming executive session. It's, he, he can minimize the difference when he used the, you know, he said, well, a person in an executive session can talk to their buddy that night or tomorrow morning about the executive session, but having the potential of having somebody else in the room with somebody who happens to be on a, on a council or committee, seeing the actual give and take and seeing the body language and so on, could, maybe, it may be, not very likely, but it, it certainly could be a problem at, at some point. I just don't see, I don't see the necessity of it, frankly, because we don't have enough of them.
George, I, I think you make a great point, because if we had a executive session, where, say you were in California and you wanted to Zoom in, I'd have to keep the meeting broadcasting live, but not transmitting to Time Warner, and that's just one little button in that control room. If that's not hit properly, that's broad, that executive session is broadcast all over, you know, all over, you know, cable news.
Right.
I mean, and will be on the news tomorrow morning on Welcome to NBC, you know, so it would be, it would be interesting. I would say, yeah, executive sessions would be something I would really try to steer away from, only because technology is technology, and, you know, we don't, not by anyone's fault, but sometimes things not, don't get done in the proper sequence, and we're broadcasting live, so.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Ron?
Second.
Second, Bob. Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, Brenda, thank you.
And Brenda will be on vacation, so don't try to call her.
See ya.
Sarah.